Plagued the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America. Into the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
No, I've.
I see this pile is there.
Yeah, we'll go down through it.
Okay.
We can do, do your minutes and stuff first and then we can do HWC. Today is fourteen. Barb, these two in your minutes hit the spot.
They are cute, aren't they?
I know, they're so cute.
Oh, you updated the meeting.
I did.
Nice, nice and big.
It is.
That's why I was like, this is nice and big and I don't have to.
I thought it was excellent.
I, I know, I'm like tempted to be like poppin' in but I've had that like respiratory thing that's been going around and everything sets me off, so I'm like, I'm not trying to just go into a coughing fit. Did you see anything on the meeting minutes from last month?
You're not even looking at meeting minutes.
Anything on the meeting minutes that you see that needs to change or you want to go ahead and make a motion?
Somebody's post.
Oh, was it mine?
Yeah.
Good, I wondered.
And then somebody was asking about town board meeting.
How did you answer?
I said, yes.
Yeah, come down, yell about our project.
Yeah, I looked at, it looks good to me.
Okay, all in favor of approving the motion or the motion to approve the minutes?
Alright, I made a motion to approve the minutes.
Okay. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
No corrections, and then we'll go to public comment.
Who made the motion?
Motion.
Who made it?
Uh, Carol and then Barb.
Okay, okay, sorry, I was looking at that, okay.
You've got salary ordinance here as well.
Yeah, that's the amended one, we just need to approve that, sign that tonight, that's the one that took that full-time status out.
Okay, so.
So why don't you do, um, why don't we do HWC because we open community crossings bids, that's why he's here.
Okay.
So I'm right.
Oh, that's what all three of these are?
No, that's not all three of those, those are actually all different things.
Got you, okay.
Um, you are for community crossings, right?
I'm here for the stormwater contract.
Okay, never mind.
Stormwater.
Stormwater contract, that's the stormwater contract. You can do the stormwater contract, alright.
He's drainage, not roads.
Yeah, that's right, exactly.
Okay.
So, um, I'm here for HWC engineering and, um, to get the stormwater contract going, we're, we're doing the, uh, stormwater design project here. Um, it's over on the, uh, east side of town, uh, taking flow from the south side of town north to, um, I think it's called Sulphur Ditch.
Sulphur Branch, yeah.
Sulphur Branch, I actually did the, um, study for that project, uh, as a young engineer about nine years ago. So I'm pretty excited to be doing the design now, I am out of the Indy office, uh, my name is Brian Groetz. I am our stormwater group lead for HWC engineering, um, so you've probably been dealing with Dustin out of our Terre Haute office.
Yes, I've done, I have been.
Up until now, um, I'll be taking the project on from here on out, so you'll see my face, uh, throughout design and then through construction as well. Um, so currently I have the, the contract here, um, and this is the contract that you guys were awarded, SRF and Okra money, I believe, okay?
Yes.
Um, and, and that's kind of our typical, um, way to, to fund these types of projects. Um, so this project, uh, has a, a design estimated cost of... Sorry.
Why do you spell your last name?
Groetz, it's G-R-O-T-Z, I actually have some cards for you guys.
Oh.
Very nice.
Thank you.
I only have three, actually.
Okay, I won't, I can't have any.
There it is, okay, so the design for this was estimated at six hundred and twenty-four thousand five hundred dollars. So that's the, or, sorry, the construction cost was estimated at that. So that'll be, um, the cost to actually put the pipe in the ground, that'll be what the contractor gets paid in the end. Uh, that's what we have estimated in our preliminary design.
What was it again?
Six hundred twenty-four thousand five hundred. Yep, and your non-construction costs total two hundred twenty-five thousand five hundred dollars. Um, those include our costs, which are lump sum up until, um, construction observation, which is a sixty thousand dollar cost, that is a not-to-exceed fee. That is an hourly fee that an inspector from HWC engineering gets paid, um, to oversee the actual construction of the project. So if the, um, project, uh, finishes quicker than we estimated, then you would have to spend less than that money. So it's a, it's an hourly, uh, fee. Um, the other fees that are a part of that non-construction cost are your grant administration services, your environmental review and your labor standards. So those are part of your, uh, federal, uh, spending. So if you have federal dollars as part of a contract, you have to have those, uh, as part of your, um, work. And those ensure that you are meeting those federal standards to spend those federal dollars. So in total, that comes to eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and I believe all of it was from SRF, uh, loan and grant money.
Yeah, so six hundred thousand from the Okra grant, um, we actually put in ninety-six thousand of our ARP money.
Okay.
So that's almost seven hundred and then the balance was a, an IFA loan, yes.
Okay, and, um, and we have, we have seen a lot of folks doing that lately as well, they're doing the ARP money, uh, funding, uh, for that project. Um, so, so, uh, for, for what you're signing tonight is to get us started on the design of that project. So that total eight hundred fifty thousand dollar project.
Is there a reason why we wouldn't like the design?
I don't think so, and, and you've been awarded money.
Yes, we've been awarded money, so, yeah.
To not go forward would be to mean you don't want to get money. And, and six hundred thousand dollars was a grant.
Yes.
So that's a hefty grant.
This is pretty standard contract in these grants, we've always, we always have a not-to-exceed contract with HWC, that's what we always see in our community crossings and any kind of work that we've done with them over the years. When we did the wastewater grant in sixteen, seventeen, similar situation.
Yep, exactly.
Similar format, we just, we just go, somebody makes a motion to approve the contract, no money is exchanged in hands at this moment because we're still in the process. It's gonna be four to six months for design.
Yeah, so, so once, yeah, right, great, um, so the, the, the schedule for this is once you approve tonight, then we have sixty days to get the survey done. And then sixty days after that, I think, uh, for the actual design of the project. So, so in that sixty days from now until when I get the survey, there'll be somebody out here, uh, actually surveying that route. Um, and they'll let you know when they're coming. Um, and then after that, they'll give the, the survey to me, I'll design it, and then I'll give you guys an update before we move into bidding or construction or anything like that of how the design of the actual project after survey compared to the, uh, preliminary estimates that we have from the study.
Do you guys have any other questions?
So you were on the original?
Yes, I, I did the original study, actually.
Cause that was part of the wastewater project.
Yes.
And I was on the wastewater project, then, I don't think that, Becky, were you on the board then?
I came in in the midst of it.
Did you come in in the midst of it, yeah?
Yeah, so I did the study when I was twenty-three.
Mm-hmm, yeah, so it was interesting then.
You're still at twenty-three.
I'm a little older than twenty-three now, but, uh.
You can't be over twenty-four.
In twenty-three, this project was estimated at about five hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah, yeah, back in twenty-fourteen, yeah.
Yeah.
Yep, yeah, this, uh, stuff has definitely gone up quite a bit since we first did this, uh, study, yep. And I helped on the wastewater project, actually, uh, back then as well, the wastewater study, but I have since only, uh, I'm a stormwater-only guy now, so. This is my specialty.
Well, after the heavy rain you guys had the other day, I was out of town, but after the heavy rain that was here, I'm sure it was pretty apparent that we need the drainage.
Those are good to remind you of why you need me.
Yeah. We have inadequate drains all around.
Yeah, yeah, I remember.
So this is a nice start because then we can build from here.
That's right, yeah, the, I, I, I forgot to say that this, this project actually creates a nice spine, um, it's, it's a large sewer going in for this kind of first phase, um, the way it was designed is that it, the side streets could connect to the, the main trunk line in the future. So you, you have something to build on once you do this project.
And in two thousand eight, it would have been worthless.
Yeah, probably with that big storm.
Yep, that is a, uh, historical flood, yeah, not, not much would have been too, uh, too handy for the two thousand eight flood.
I'll make a motion to approve the contract.
And I will second it.
In the subdivision in two points, correct?
Yes, uh, so, so, uh. Yep, and then the other point is like right on the, uh, old railroad grade, I actually have a map if you'd like to look at it.
Yeah, I figured there was a map somewhere floating around.
Actually, it's going down the alley.
Yeah, yeah, we're just taking it straight.
My, my engineer.
I was gonna say, yeah. Save this there. This is mapping here.
Yeah.
So like between the church and deep end of the lane and then straight down.
So you guys, you can complete your motion, take your vote while you start.
All in favor?
All in favor, all in favor. Let me just say.
What you gotta say, come on Becky, lay it on us.
There ain't anybody that hates to see.
Prices rise.
To the price.
I know.
Any more than me.
Right.
But I don't wanna see people's houses flooded.
Yeah, exactly.
Well, right, right.
And we have to do it now because that's the rules, the regulations. And most of the time, insurance doesn't help with these kind of floods.
Well, and.
The prices are gonna keep rising.
Did you have a contract to sign, you wanna sign my copy?
We have one right here.
Okay.
Um, so, yeah, so our council president is not here tonight.
Okay.
And he is our authorized signer, but Cody can sign in his place.
Okay.
As a vice president, I asked my, I can't even find the signature page. Maybe you can, Cody, I've been looking at my.
That's number nine.
Number nine. Yes, I, I asked the town attorney, our, our president's been pretty sick, so he's been kinda in and out, so. Versus trying to track him down and all that stuff that Cody's authorized to sign right now.
Okay, great, do you wanna make a copy of that one or you can sign this one twice?
Yeah, I'll just make a copy of this one. Big documents, Cody.
Something like that.
Go crazy stuff all the time.
Thank you.
For a good thing.
And babe, Matt on Facebook will come yell at me now. I tried to comment on that, but you must have stopped comments on it, cause I was writing a book, I was like, no.
You don't really know who's on that. They already know. They think they have your name. Yeah.
Well, and that's why I started to like chime in, and I was like, and then I was like, oh, she must have already stopped the comments, cause I was like, no.
Thank you, looking forward to working with you.
Yeah, me too, nice to meet you guys.
Nice to meet ya.
If you have any questions, now you got myself.
Yeah.
We'll see ya, nice to meet ya.
Thank you. While you guys are doing contracts, if you want to approve Christie Gerald's contract at the same time, that's her grant administration contract. I thought he was for community crossings, I didn't know they were sending a stormwater rep tonight, nobody told me.
Yeah.
And this is Christie's part of the contract, so.
We know she's already hustled.
Yeah.
She has a hustle.
Pleasantly great work.
She hustles as fast as she talks.
Oh, man. Oh, man, she does.
There's talk she's in here talking, I'm like, what's she saying?
Are we supposed to be signing this? I didn't see.
Just reviewing it.
Somebody needs to make a motion to approve Christie's contract and there probably is a signature page somewhere. And I mean, Cody probably is the only one that needs to sign it. I don't think she probably has all council members on there, it's just similar, it's the same as the HWC contract.
Well, I'll make a motion to approve Christie Gerald's contract.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The funds haven't been released, so nobody's paid, like gets paid or anything, we're just, all these paperwork has to be in before we can start designing everything.
We have paid her some money already.
We paid her, um, for the environmental review.
Right.
So, and I believe that we'll get reimbursed for that through the grant, cause we didn't pay for that. Um, and maybe not, I'm not sure how that works, but, um, anything related to stormwater, like Scott Craig, any work that he's done, because he's done title work and stuff like that, that'll all go into the stormwater grant, so we will get reimbursed for that out of the grant that we spent out of pocket, and he's kept all of his hours for that separate, so he'll build that separately outside of his town contract. I just wanna stay on the stormwater fee, um, maybe, I, I think I've been really busy in here and maybe we should have done a little more PR on it so people would understand it, and a couple Facebook posts, you're, I understand that some people got a seven dollar and fifty cent charge, and we've been extremely busy in here with other projects and now we're going through an audit, um, but we have answered questions, we've had, like Chris, or Andrew's been taking, she's been keeping track of how many people have called, she's got maybe ten people over there that have called and asked questions, we had a few people on Facebook comment, I talked to, you know, someone today about it, um. It's seven dollars and fifty cents, I know no one wants to pay, but in order to move forward, the only way we were gonna do this grant was with a user fee because we have to charge one, because we have to maintain it, and if we don't have any, you know, you build something, it's like, you buy that car, you have to have money for the oil change down the road, so, you know, it all goes hand in hand and, so I mean, I know, maybe we didn't do a very good job of putting that out there, but we are here every second Tuesday of every month, seven o'clock.
How many meetings did we have on it?
And it is on, it is always on the Facebook page too, so we did have all those public hearings too.
We don't have anybody from the paper here.
You know what, I think they just use the videos. Yeah, yeah. I always listen to it when I'm doing the minutes, I always listen to the video in the background, and then I look and see what sweater I'm wearing, so I'm not wearing the same one for the next meeting. That's a true story, alright. That's all kind of old business, so.
Any other old business on here that we need to do?
You guys just need to, just second read your amendment to the salary ordinance and everybody sign that.
Okay, uh, so.
You don't have to read the whole thing, just your change.
We just made the change in the ordinance for the.
Street superintendent.
Street superintendent, and that's section three, so it's just saying that it's a thirty-hour per week instead of a full-time.
I just took out the full-time language, that's all I took out.
The same, same pay everything, just we dropped it down to not full-time, um, anyone wanna make a motion to approve that?
I make a motion. I'll second.
Okay, I'll pass that down, you guys will need to sign it. So, that was Barb and Carol, or Becky, not Carol.
No.
And then.
And there's our new street superintendent.
Like that nice new big old patch there at the beginning of town.
It's just a patch.
Hey, it's still a lot better than the [mimicking noise] as you walk, drive in.
So make your motion to, or take your vote.
All in favor. There you go, I always forget about that.
Um, that is your grant letter, that's our congratulations letter that you're holding your hands there, Cody, kinda jumping all over the place.
Yeah, sorry.
But I don't care either way, so, okay. Whenever you wanna, we'll do it, I guess, under a new business, we should have maybe done this other, we'll call this, I don't know. I'll just, I don't wanna call it, I guess.
Okay, okay, so we'll.
Back to the old business. I feel like the grants are ongoing business, how about that?
So community crossings, stormwater, grant, that's all kind of what we've talked about here, um.
USDA grant, Kevin, you have an update on?
I was just gonna do that all over the place and look at it.
Okay.
Those are good all at once.
Okay.
Okay, so I mean, really, that's all the old business unless we have any update on like the title line stuff, which.
Uh-uh, I haven't heard from anybody, so, um, I guess you can go to new business then.
Okay, on to new business, and then we've, really, we've got the, we were awarded the six hundred thousand for community crossings, this is.
Now, that's the stormwater grant.
Stormwater, and, um, that's.
From Okra.
From Okra, stormwater.
Yeah, the grants for six hundred thousand dollars, um, we're putting in ninety-six, and then the balance is an IFA loan, which will be handled at some point along the way, I did talk to Scott Craig today, and he does believe that the IFA loan will require a rate study on our wastewater rates.
Okay.
Um, and he said if we, he said we can probably put in a, do our water rates at the same time, since we've been just, we've been talking about that, so we can probably do it like at the same time. So he said it's, it's part of IFA financing, they call this their easy financing program, he said, but he said it's not as easy as it sounds. So there'll be steps along the way, and he said a rate study will be one of them, so.
IFA.
Um, the Indiana Finance Authority, so.
If I remember, when we did the sewer project, they did the water, they had, we had.
They did the wastewater, yes, they did the wastewater rates then.
Well, but they did a, a water thing too, I think.
They may have, I'm not, I don't remember that, but they may have, um, I know he did the wastewater rates, because, I mean, that was like a huge increase.
Cause when I first come on the board, I remember something about water rates.
Yeah, but we bought down the stormwater rate, we could have taken like, we could have financed more and had a higher stormwater rate and things like that, so we bought it down with our ARP money that we're putting in, so. That's really all, and then, like, it, like I said, he, like he said the design, it'll be like three or four months and this'll kind of be a slow process and then it'll kind of kick into gear, so, we don't really look for construction until I would say the spring of twenty twenty-four, is the thought. But that's just our award letter.
We can cover the water tower later.
Ah, the other new business is, sorry Cody, I'm taking over your meeting.
You're fine.
Um, we opened our community crossings bids, Carol and I opened them on Friday, um, we had two bids. Our original estimates from HWC, that's who I thought he was earlier, I thought he was from community crossings bids. Our original estimates from HWC for both streets was three hundred thirty-three thousand one hundred and sixty-four dollars. Our community crossings grant, grant that we received, that we're set to receive is two hundred forty-nine thousand eight hundred and seventy-three dollars. We received two bids, one from Milestone, which used to be Wabash Valley, their bid, let me tell ya, Carol and I had galled on. We were a little, I was a little stressed out, their bid came in at two hundred and twenty-four thousand six hundred and ninety-nine dollars, which is over a hundred thousand dollars less than the estimate, and then we got another bid from DC Construction Services, they're out of Pendleton, Indiana, and their bid for both streets was one hundred ninety-one thousand one hundred three dollars and sixty cents. So, we're way under the, the original estimates, which is great, I mean, it, it stinks and it's great. It stinks because we have this big community crossings grant of two fifty, but you can't go back in and put more in it. I mean, if you could, I'd be like, let's do the rest of Main Street, but you can't, so, um, it's my understanding that the low bidder, as long as they're qualified bidder, which HWC was double-checking all of that, that we do take the low bid, so that reduces our match, I did the math with Cody in here.
So who was the low bidder?
DC Construction Services.
And where were they out of?
Pendleton, Indiana.
I don't think you have to take the low.
No, you don't have to.
No, he said as long as they're qualified, we do take the low bid.
Who told you that?
The HWC engineer, cause I called and talked to him, so. At one ninety-one, one oh three, you don't have to take the low bid in a lot of government services, but in this, he said it's typical. So that reduces our match, our original match was eighty-three, two ninety-one, that reduces our match down to forty-seven thousand seven seventy-six, which is really good for us, so. Mm-hmm, that's a pretty good savings, so.
Yeah, literally, huge.
So that's how the bids fell.
You can only go to the, to the street up here, and I, and I realize that.
Mm-hmm.
But they're gonna grind that down, the, the concrete, they'll grind it down.
They're, they won't grind it all, it won't be heavily built.
They'll gra, grind the top of it all away, but what we need to do is talk to them about going up here by Shopmires and doing that piece of concrete right there too, they only have the perfect equipment here.
We might be able to talk to them when they're here, so, we might be able to talk. We might be able to talk to them.
I'm not grinding down, that hump up there is really nasty.
That hump is pretty bad.
Buy someone dinner. What are you talking about?
No.
I don't know that we take action on it, I. I mean, I honestly don't remember the last Community Crossings that we had to take any action on it. I just think that they issue us a letter, which I.
Where'd they get their material? Pendleton?
Uh, I don't, I don't know if that says.
You said HWC is going to look into them?
Yeah, they'll, he was, he told me that, I'm looking to see if I have an email from him, hold on. I talked to Katie. Yesterday, Katie Adams emailed me. Um, I sent the bids to review, I sent them to Kevin for review. Katie said yesterday. I need some information off this document to be able to fill out your funding request properly, so. I mean, I think that there's really nothing else for us to do, that's just how they fell. So Kevin didn't email me back and give me a list of anything, so I talked to him and he said, send them over, so that's what I did.
They had several records of several towns they've worked.
They did, yeah, they did, um, I had never heard of them and I did talk to, uh. They've done work at IUPY, City of Anderson, City of Muncie, City of Westfield.
That's all north of Indy then.
Pendleton's north of Indy too.
Northeast.
They're not subcontracting, they're self-performing. Quite a bit of equipment. I mean, they seem to check off all the boxes, they, they probably wouldn't have gotten this far if they didn't check off all the boxes that, you know what I mean? Says their suppliers are for asphalt are E and B paving, Rees Riley, Harding Group and Milestone, so.
So they'll get it out there.
I would say so.
It's only place.
Yeah. So. That's what we got, I was happy.
Can we just decide tonight on who we're picking or not?
I mean, I don't think we decide, I think it's already, I think that it's done, he didn't say.
Okay.
We sign. I don't know what I'm supposed to sign, it says contract signed tonight, but they didn't send me anything to sign. So. I'll call Kevin here in just a second. So.
And that would definitely be done this summer, right, or fall?
Yes, that would be done for the end of the year.
I've been talking to Natalie about the bridge down here. Um, you ladies might want to plan a shopping day for Indy, I, I believe, in my opinion. You're gonna have to go see your representative, get a bridge in there in a pretty immediate time.
I can't hear and understand you, Mike.
The bridge down here, I went and looked at that bridge.
The culvert, you mean?
Yeah, the culvert. Well, they're, they're just gonna put a box collar in it, I always call it a hog house, it's some loom, big loom, and then just build in. And pave over, but, but anyway, that's the county. If they don't. If they don't approve, then you ladies might have to take a shopping day up in Indy and go and see your representative.
Oh, yeah.
There's no place to shop anymore.
I'm sure you can find something to do.
Can we borrow your bulletproof vest?
I think we, I think we probably.
But I don't think you're gonna wanna wear that heavy.
Kevin can just take you guys up.
Yeah, we'll just take you.
When is, when are county council meetings, John?
County council, uh, second Thursday at nine AM.
Second Thursday at nine AM.
Well now, he's been up there once.
Well, that's, I know, she's told me that.
I went to the commissioners meeting, but county council holds the money, the commissioners don't.
Yeah.
Is Jim Howard still on council?
Yeah.
Second Thursday at nine AM.
See, they're taking the bridge out right down here.
Are they just once a month?
Yeah, I wonder for the bridges.
So the next one for them is gonna be April thirteenth.
The sign up here, it's got, it said, bridge closed and it says, looks like it's, I think it's supposed to say one point five. And driving by and you look at it, it says fifteen miles. And it says one point five miles.
That's just cause you don't see that little dog.
Cause when I drove by, I didn't read that right, did I? Fifteen miles, that road, don't go fifteen miles.
Mike, um, why don't you call Randy and see how Randy feels about that bridge?
Before you guys even on there, this was brought up when I was working and I measured that bridge, I think, about. Six inches and a half a foot short. So the county really does have to take care of it, but that's it, run around as I got.
Oh, I thought we were told the county did take care of it.
The county does take care of it.
On their list.
They take care of the bridges. But, you know, like I'm saying, it might not be a top priority for them, I mean, they. They got plans on down the road with the bridge crew.
Well, when that bridge was hit, the county highway responded and, and made a repair. So as far as I'm concerned, when they did that, they took responsibility for it.
The reason why I, I brought this up, I looked underneath there, there's cracks and water seeping down through there. And it's not gonna be too much longer, that bridge, and I'm afraid somebody might get hurt on it, school buses will cross it. It could last five years, it could last ten more, but do you wanna take that chance?
And I asked Randy, when I went to the commissioners meeting, I spoke to him in the hallway and I asked him if he, if they regularly inspect those. And he said, well, we have inspected it before.
Yeah.
That was all the response I got, so.
They didn't seem concerned about it.
They didn't seem concerned about it, no.
Cause I don't think they realized they did, they had to take care of it.
I think they know they have to take care of it.
I don't think so.
So it's gonna come to push, come shove, is that it?
Well, didn't they, didn't they question whether they had to take care of it or not, whether it was long enough?
They were kind of throwing back and forth a little bit, yeah, but. It's always been their responsibility.
I mean, there's all kinds of things you can do, I.
So, yeah.
Are you, are you recording all that?
Don't wanna say anything.
So.
That mind was.
Public meeting, Mike.
I don't, I really don't care, I've always been pretty full.
Where's our public act?
You can take pictures of the bottom of the bridge, put it in a newspaper, force it a little bit. You know, there's so many things.
Go for it, Michael.
Oh yeah, I'll take the picture, but your name's gonna be there. I don't wanna make you mad because. He, he does good for us if I need some things, like some.
Right, I know, I know he has been.
But that bridge is, yeah, it's gonna go. Like I said, it could be ten years, fifteen years, but.
Yeah.
It's gonna get worse because I'm water seeping in between the cracks now.
Well, none of us want any of our kids on a bus that has an accident there or a car or anything, so. They had an opportunity to work with the Trail Alliance and. Put a new bridge in there and they did not, you know, want to cooperate with that, so.
Don't blow them there. I'm not for trails.
Well, we know you're not.
Okay.
What's doing Natalie?
I'm calling Kevin really fast.
Well, something else I want to know.
You guys can continue.
They're gonna go down that road grid with your, your sewer, your sewer line. Right, isn't it?
No, it's gonna be in.
It's going in the alley on the other side of the tree row then. Okay.
Yeah, it's gonna be right away.
It's an existing alley.
Alright, well, that's what got me, I think, is that road.
Well, we thought that's what we would have to do.
Start sending them bills. For as long as the town's been mowing that.
We don't know who owns it.
Yeah, we tried, that's, we're trying to figure it out still.
We've done title searches.
Which the railroad, I mean, it ran right down through there, you still can't.
Well, just cause you say so, don't mean that's.
Yeah, they, they've said that they don't own it, it's.
Yeah, nobody's, nobody's admitting to it.
Everything that we, that the town lawyer can find says that.
Then why are you, then why are you worried about going down that alley and we go?
We're not, I don't think we are worried about it.
We're not worried about it, no.
It's cause I'm saying it makes a little jog.
No, we're not jogging, we're going straight.
No, I know you don't jog, I don't run either.
I did.
I'd say go straight, I'm just talking.
My mouth.
I'm just talking, nevermind.
Yes.
Yeah, the guy that just came, we have a new picture of how it go, it's pretty straight shot.
Yeah, he gave me one back there.
She emailed me yesterday.
Okay, well, since.
Well, since Mike's talking, we just let him do the street.
Well, I was gonna go on to some more new business, which, so me and Natalie have talked a little bit, I talked to her a little bit on Sunday.
Okay.
I'm proposing that we take and potentially look at options for a mural in town. An actual like full wall mural, um, I was thinking about, you know, reaching out to the Civic Center. But Natalie mentioned.
Right, I'm sorry.
We already own.
Yeah.
This big wall right here coming into town, the edge of the police. And it's a much flatter surface, it's not, so. I'm going to see if we can't start looking at like pricing and stuff on doing that and.
We had priced it out before.
Okay, well, that's what she has said, but I mean, everything changes.
Okay, that's all.
I've talked to White about it and you can give like a call out for others.
Well, and that's what I was gonna do, cause I know a lot of the people.
Um, and that's, he's working at the Swat, he might be able to.
Well, not only that, but if I can get the numbers and stuff together, I might be able to get a grant through my company to.
Right, right.
Provide some assistance on that money, I do.
That's where I wanted to put it with the town marshal, cause you can see it.
Yeah, coming into, that's what I thought too.
Right.
We discussed putting it on the old IGA building, but we're not sure how long it has to be there or stand, yeah.
Well, and I've seen a lot of, I actually was looking at.
You're pressing where?
Um, there's a grant that the state is actually doing currently.
Oh, okay.
You have to have it filled out by the seventeenth, so it literally would have to be done by Friday, um.
Oh, that arts grant, I saw that on my screen.
I was gonna. If it's something that I could fill out and have done by Friday, I will try, but. That's gonna be a lot of work.
You moved on to murals.
We moved on, yeah.
Moving on to murals.
Since you left us.
Okay, um, he said that we don't have to do a contract tonight, he said he's at road school and he said Katie was probably working on it. So he said, we'll be fine, so we don't have to make, take any action on that, no action needed on the Community Crossings, that's just where our numbers fell. Which is pretty good and we go from there, and so.
Cause it, that was just a few days ago, so, we'll let them research.
Yeah, so. Katie's pregnant right now, so she's kind of dingy right now. She's like, I keep forgetting things. Alright, so we want to put murals in town, so we're looking for some grant funding, right?
Yes.
Alright, got it.
I'll put that in new business.
Yep.
And I've already, I've reached out to Mike Lunsford about maybe getting some. So I've got a couple ideas for maybe a couple different things and.
Okay.
I asked him about some like old pictures of Rosedale from like the nineteen hundreds, nineteen forties, maybe include some. Older.
Check with Ken Taylor and see if. The Civic Center receives some old pictures.
Kent or Ken.
Ken.
I gave them a bunch of old yearbooks, like a stack like this. That we could probably get some pictures of.
Well, and that's what I told Mike, Mike said he had several, he's gonna email me back tomorrow, so. Any other new business other than the water tower?
Um, no, and I'll do that underwater sewer.
Okay.
So, that's fine.
Okay, no, um, okay, so then we'll go on to departments, which is. Right there to you at Water Sewer.
Well, um, I don't have a water, I don't have a water report.
Okay.
Um, I'll just.
We'll just put.
I'm sorry, and Carol, there's no, we didn't do anything in the cemetery last month.
Okay.
It's been a little crazy in here, um, this is just the tank condition, they do an inspection, they inspected it in October. Um, they need to paint it, that's all, if anybody wants to, uh, read the in-depth inspection of the water tank and see the pictures. Of the water tower, you're welcome to it, they send it every year, we have this contract, um, the service contract on it. Which Gary says we should keep forever and ever, so.
Does Phoenix still do that?
No. Actually, Phoenix was bought out, was bought out, was bought out, so we have Phoenix contract rates and we're like on the third person that's owned that contract, so. Um, other thing in water, Gary has found us someone new to do our water testing. So we don't have to deal with the billing issues I was dealing with last month on Pace, it's a flat twenty-five dollar fee, it's cheaper than the other company, they're out of Brownsburg. So that's already been switched over.
Perfect, sounds great.
Their first bill is on your thing, I haven't talked to Rob, um, I've seen some bills come through. Uh, he must be launching the mission system, which is his communication system, he must be getting that all going, um. And, oh, Gary's also looking to switch our chlorine supplier. Um, he's got a better deal somewhere else as well, so. But other than that, I don't really have anything. Oh, I do have something lying. Okay, sorry, it's in my top drawer, I stuck it there, it didn't want to look at. Alright, we've been having this ongoing discussion about water meters, so. Every month when we read, we're reading more and more manually, pulling lids, I think Andrea and Mike, you guys read ten to twelve the other day.
Eleven, twelve.
Yeah, um, so Matt with Midwest Meter has given me some prices on meter replacement. There's a couple different options on the way these go, there's a meter base on the bottom of them. It's like sixty-five dollars each, if you have to replace that, some of them might be fine, some of them might not, um. The simple meter is like two hundred dollars, the cellular meter is like two hundred and thirty dollars. Then there's a little bit fancier one for two hundred and fifty dollars, so. The recommendation on meter replacement, the recommendation is to try to spec out money to replace. Like ten to fifteen percent of your meters every year, because when we did that entire town replacement, they're all gonna start going at the same time. So the thought is try to incrementally replace them and when you do these projects and you do these large grants, it feels like there's no forward planning, like. Okay, later on, how are we gonna pay for meters? So, um, he gave me this quote, we do have some extra ARP money, so you know, if you did. They're expensive. And then you can do like a cellular thing and you can also do this thing where you can like look at a meter anytime. Like you could call me right now and say, hey, I got a leak, can you see if my meter's running? And I can go like this and go, oh yep, you're spinning like crazy without actually pulling your lid, so there's some. I don't know, there's some fancy stuff.
History or anything?
Yes, they do keep a history.
I'm guessing that's the two hundred and fifty dollar one.
Yeah.
You can see when the leak started and everything.
You know, I mean, if you put, if you start, if you say you're gonna spend like five thousand dollars a year, that's twenty meters a year. In town, we have, and up the hill, we have about three hundred and seventy-five meters.
You don't have to buy program.
So, um, fifty a year would be optimal, but.
Replace the program.
We just replaced our meter reading program, fifty a year would be great, but there's no way we can do that.
Well, we're gonna use ARP money, but then going forward when we're out of that.
Right.
How are we gonna pay for it?
Exactly. So if we, if we did wanna designate some ARP money, so. We have ninety-six thousand of that committed to the stormwater, I don't know where my spreadsheet is offhand. We used some for the software for that, we used some for the environmental review that we paid for Christie Darrow, but I believe we get that back out of the grant too. Um, I'm not sure.
Which, that was five thousand, wasn't it?
Mm-hmm, that was five thousand, we still have like forty-five thousand dollars. Um, I had planned to use a little bit of that in the Community Crossings match, but I'm not gonna have to now.
Right.
So we still have money available there, so that's just something to think about, so, um. I don't know, Carol, we just have to, we just have to start.
Do these meters have any kind of a guarantee?
Well, I mean, they, they all have a guarantee.
When did we replace them?
Two thousand eight.
Two thousand eight?
Two thousand eight. Mm-hmm, so, what's two thousand, so they?
Fifteen years old.
Fifteen years old, so like the, apparently like the batteries that are in the sensors, cause we just drive by and read. Those are like ten to twelve year batteries or something, I don't know, I. Talking about meters is a lot of information for my brain to take on, so. I just know that we're starting to read more. I just know that we're starting to read more and more. So, nothing lasts forever, I guess.
How many did you say that we have total?
We have about three seventy-five.
Why don't we try to get as many done as possible with our ARP money?
Well, the thing is, would, like she said, they recommend doing it in smaller batches. That way, they don't all go out at once, so.
There is a recommendation to do it in waves, and I talked to Matt about that, there's different strategies. There's like, just the random strategy where you just replace as you need to, there's a, or we're gonna do this whole street. And then we're gonna move over to this side, I mean, he said there's a lot of different ways you can strategize on it, I'm like, I don't know.
Are you replacing meters right now? Are they starting to go out?
We are, there's, they're not, they're working, they're just not reading, I mean, they're still like calculating, but we can't read them.
Starting to fail?
Yes.
So, can we replace batteries?
Well, that's a complicated thing too, and I haven't, I haven't gotten to the, to the base of that, I've asked him. And he's like, well, it's kinda more complicated than that, and then like he told me I probably need one of those new receivers. Which is that little black thing sitting on that computer, and that's four thousand dollars. And, so, I don't know, we can probably, I probably need to have him put some better numbers together, and. But that's, that's a starting point, so.
And you said we have like twelve that are out now? I mean, that's.
Well, a couple we can't find.
If we were to do just those twelve right now, I mean, that'd be three grand. At the two fifty cost.
Yeah, that's at the higher one, yeah.
Which I mean.
He's got us, he says we've got three fifty, so he's closer on that, he did the original project too. So, yeah. So.
So, I mean, that's definitely something we should probably. Get members and move forward soon, just so that. We don't have any issues.
Let me get some firm numbers for the next meeting.
So, good to move on to street, Mike, you have anything else for street?
No, not really, uh, riser or, uh, the alley runs by the park on Main Street. It's broke, trash truck was like probably run over, can replace the lid, it won't stay on.
Okay, the meter riser, do we not have any?
I didn't, I, I'm still searching for stuff, I'm still finding stuff, still learning stuff.
Okay.
You know. Get things over.
Alright, I'll call Matt about that tomorrow.
I saw you trim that one tree on the, on Denman Alley. Have you been trimming in some more?
I can, take it back, brother.
Okay, well, no, I didn't mean that one, but did you make it down like the Main Street Alley behind?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's just a lot of.
If you guys want me to ta- take it back more, that's fine.
Well, I, I, it's a pretty good sized tree, if you wanna take the whole thing out. It's right there on the alley.
Oh, and.
I can't believe we didn't have more storm damage in town with that big storm.
Something else too, I brought the mowers up and one of them just, it's not running. Again, I guess you guys have had problems with it. Yeah, it's.
Who have we used for mower repairs before?
We've used M and M and they've just not been successful in diagnosing what's wrong with that mower. I mean, it's been over there so many times and it comes back and it sputters and it dies and we take it back, it's a back and forth thing.
And how many money for a new mower?
I don't know. I mean.
I gotta think on that. Over Brazil. See if they'll work on it.
Who?
Crowder's. Chris Crowder, his uncle owns Crowder.
It's a scag.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, you give them a call and see if they'll work on it.
There is a guy, there's a mowing repair service called Konine over in Marshall, Illinois, that does have a scag specialty. I don't think that M and M is anything beyond like a simple service, they're not like diagnosing problems, you know, they'll change the oil, change the blades and that kinda stuff, but. I don't know, so.
Have you, have we looked at Smiths and Terre Haute before?
I have not.
Cause that's who I know we've always used for.
Uh, you need to buy some blades.
Yes, we do.
And also, there, supposedly there was a jack over, and there's not.
I don't think there was a jack.
Uh, clips had to work, but we can't find it.
I can call Jase, I can call Jase, cause it might have been Jase's, but I do not think we had a jack. So.
I mean, I've got one, but.
Okay, if we need one, get a price and we can probably buy one.
Yeah, those aren't really.
Okay, let me, let me call around about the mower, see if we can find someone, I'll ask Jase about the.
I've got Smith's number here if you need it. Um, it's Smith's small engines and they're.
And also, permission to close off the street where the plastic pipe is at, I can't remember what that street is, I guess it's on the street out in, in town. In front of your place?
Line Street.
You line, yeah. And the goal to do that, that job, that, cause that old tile's gotta come out of it and everything, that just irritates me, go by there and see that pipeline.
Yeah, it needs to be installed, we just have to make sure it'll drain.
I'll just go somewhere.
Eight, one, two, two, three, two. And they do all kinds of, I'm surprised Justin hasn't worked with them before, honestly.
Yeah, okay. Alright.
Uh, park.
Looks lovely.
Looks lovely, okay.
Kids are playing in it. We are still waiting on the.
I have park board ordinance.
Oh, do you?
Right, but I think we need to talk about it.
Okay.
So, come by and we'll talk about it.
Okay, we'll talk about it, me and you and Barb.
Yeah.
One more thing on new business, did, I know you had mentioned, we've been, we've talked about it a little bit, uh. Community cleanup day.
Oh, yeah, Carol and I were looking at that, you know what?
I found out some dates from Ken.
Did you? What you got?
He didn't have May sixth.
Right, I was gonna say, I think I knew he didn't have May sixth.
He has April eighth, fifteenth and twenty-second are open.
Would you guys have any interest in coordinating your community cleanup day with the other communities? And try to do it on the same, every, all the towns try to do it on the same day, and make it a county thing?
I mean, I wouldn't.
We're gonna get a discount on dumpsters?
That's a thought, but.
Will they have enough dumpsters?
Oh, surely they would.
I don't know, who's per, do you know who's provided Rockville's dumpsters?
I don't.
We've used Republic the last couple of years.
Do you know when their day is?
It's, uh, it's, this is the first time I brought it up, but everyone's talking about setting their date. So.
Um.
You guys think it's a good idea of bringing it up to.
Yeah, definitely.
Easter weekend.
I mean, if we can all do one, if everybody else is willing.
At least you could share the advertising in the papers, it'd be the minimum expense you would, could share.
We have, we don't have any problem getting people stuff.
Yeah, we don't have problems.
We usually have to start turning them away, cause they're full.
We have people who don't live in town.
Yeah.
Frank stuff.
I think.
And if they think it's a countywide thing, then there probably be even more that will have to turn away, so. No, probably, on your question. That's what I'm thinking, what about you guys?
Well, he just said great, but you know.
Yeah, I didn't think about that though, so. But, I mean, if we can do it as a county and potentially get, you know. More dumpsters for cheaper, cause I'm sure.
If you, I don't know.
Yeah, that's really, we need to think about that.
You gotta think about that, um, on your calendar end.
Yeah, they don't.
Eighth, fifteenth and twenty-second.
Of April.
I would say no on the eighth.
That's Easter weekend, so.
Yeah, no on the eighth.
Is there anything going on at the civic center? April first is there.
And their spring fling. Is that April first?
I haven't been to any.
I don't, I don't know, um. I gotta pencil a couple things in on my April Saturdays, so you guys pick something and let me know.
Cleanup. The twenty-seven, or the twenty-second is Earth Day.
It is Earth Day, I saw that, I know, I was actually.
Oh, I wonder when the.
Potentially gonna be out of town.
Baseball kickoff is.
I bet it's the fifteenth.
I think it is the fifteenth.
I know that Duncan has a game the eighteenth.
Let me see if.
Saturday. Well, bring your junk and go to the ballgame. Or jamboree, whatever.
What is it called, the Rosedale Youthly? Youth baseball softball, okay.
I don't think, I haven't seen any postings for dates for that.
I have, I did see a posting where they had some dates on there.
For the jamboree?
So, I'm looking right now.
Okay, while we're. Fire.
Fire? Well, they had a total of seven runs, four med and three fire. Which was one brush, one structure and one mutual aid. And there is a breakfast Sunday. Y'all come?
That's the.
Nineteenth.
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 Okay, cemetery, you said there was nothing, correct?
Uh, Carol, you wanna announce your cleanup dates?
Oh, cemetery.
Oh, yes, uh, it will start the twenty-seventh, so everybody needs to have all their. Decorations off before then.
Of this month?
Yes. And they can put their decorations back on, on Good Friday, which is, uh.
April seventh.
April seventh.
Make sure we get a post on the Facebook page, Carol, I saw someone saying.
Yeah, I've seen somebody asking about that.
I think she put it already on.
I think she has put it on there too.
Posted on the Facebook page.
Okay, need to most post it on there and then do you want me to run it out in the paper?
Yes, I, I was gonna tell the reporter to, but he, nobody's here.
Oh, look at the camera and make the announcement.
I think we just did.
What time is the fire department breakfast?
Seven till eleven.
This.
Have you ever been?
No, I've been meaning to come.
It's pretty good.
Maybe this, maybe this will be the month.
It's time you showed up, good food. And if you leave hungry, that's your fault.
One of these, one of these days I'll make it.
We don't wanna hear any complaints.
You don't wanna hang around me too long, man. So, you don't wanna hang around me too long, man?
So, police. I'm not sure how to read this yet, but, uh, so is the traffic stop, all tickets or?
No, those are just stops.
Okay, so.
They made, I didn't get the insight report today, I ran out.
Okay, I was gonna say I.
That just tells you every call that they wrote down for us and how many of them we had.
Got you, okay.
Have you had any crime on the trail?
Not that I've been told about.
Okay, we just thought we'd ask that, there seems to be rumors.
Are you causing problems on the trail?
Uh, no, Barb's the only one that.
I'm the walker on the trail, I haven't seen anybody.
She carries a stick and you better.
I've seen that, she's like, uh, Buford Tucker, she carries a big old hickory stick.
So, there's.
They're straightened up.
On the.
Supposed crime on the trail.
Well, there's people from Rockville think we have a lot of crime on our trail here.
Yes, I, I was actually messaged the other day from a lady I know, she's like, Natalie, they're saying that there's cars and. Houses being broken into along the trail, and, um, is this, what, and I'm like, well. I, I live on the trail, I've never had a problem, we've never had anybody in our yard, we've never had any issues at all. I don't ever remember any issues down.
Mister Cardy be the two that be the, and then you are right there.
Right, I mean, the worst that we've had is, um. I know, I won't even rehash it, cause we're on camera right now, and that's a really funny story. But, um, no, I, there's, we've never had an issue, the trails, you know what? The trails, it's great, so, that's how I feel about that.
I mean, you guys would know if there was ever any kind of crime happening that was reported.
Other than, other than the Facebook police.
I was gonna say, no, 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 they, they would put it on Facebook.
Right, and they wouldn't call it in.
And they expect these guys to check Facebook and, and go out on their own.
Yeah, if it's posted on Facebook and, uh, we're not told about it either through a phone call or from the sheriff's department, then I don't pay a whole lot of attention to it.
Right, so that's, I mean, that's, there's our debunking of that rumor, as far as I'm concerned.
Keyboard warriors really don't affect me that much.
Yeah, alright, what we got, Cody?
Uh, you ready, you ready for me?
Oh, yeah.
So, to give everybody an update on the USDA grant for the car and the pickup truck, I contacted the. Ford dealership and asked her for an update on the build date for the Ford, for the truck. She was unable, unable to provide me with anything, other than no update.
Yeah, that's what she said.
Um, the police vehicle is scheduled to be built the week of April tenth. So, four to six weeks, it will go to Fort Wayne, that's the dealership that we ordered it through. We will then have to go to Fort Wayne and get it, um, so myself and probably one of these guys will go with me. And then we will transport it from Fort Wayne to the outfitter in Lafayette, which is move over outfitters, the ones putting all the lights and. Camera and radar and the graphics and everything in it. Hopefully, late June, early July, we'll have that. Um, we do have a purchase agreement letter, Natalie's got a copy of that from West Terre Haute, where they're gonna buy the Explorer. Um, and we're working with West Terre Haute and the outfitters to get equipment out of this Explorer, the radio. The printer and then our weapons are coming out, everything else is staying, West Terre Haute was buying all that, so we're working with them to. Drop the Explorer off, get radio swapped and get our car back and get them the, um, Explorer in a timely manner. Along with that grant, the EMA got a grant, I'm not sure through where. Not sure if it's a federal grant or state grant, but they got a grant for new computers for every squad car in the county. So, um. They are actually getting us a new computer, software, they're paying for almost all of the mounting system. It's about a thirty-eight hundred dollar complete package, we are gonna have to pay. About three hundred and thirty dollars of, of that thirty-nine, thirty-nine hundred dollars, we have to pay a little bit. They were only able to cover eight hundred dollars of the mounting system and it was a little over nine hundred dollars. We're also going to pay for a, uh, four-year warranty for the, it's a Surface Pro is what they're getting, Surface Pro eight. Um, and then a USB hub and the mounting system, so. That's that on the vehicles, here's a rendering of what the vehicle will look like with the lettering and stuff. Only thing, I can't tell you one hundred percent for sure is the colors. The vehicle itself's gonna be a light silver, so the lettering will be a contrasting darker color. Uh, probably like a charcoal gray or something like that, something similar to what we have now.
And what kind of vehicle is it?
It's a Tahoe.
Tahoe.
Shaggy Tahoe, same thing that county in Rockville has right now. But that's what it'll look like, and then the place it's doing the outfitting, they also did that, that's their rendering. So, when it leaves, when we take the radio, when we take the Explorer up there to get the radio out, when we go get it. When we come back in town, it'll be ready to go to work, there won't be no having to go get it lettered somewhere else or get something else done, it should be.
Complete.
Matter of us putting our stuff in it and getting a box built, we're probably just gonna get some lumber and build a box ourselves for the back of it, instead of buying another one or something. Matter of us putting our stuff in it and getting a box built, we're probably just gonna get some lumber and build a box ourselves for the back of it, instead of buying another one or something. And the only other thing I need to, is I need to request that we. Buy a couple of new lights, we need to put a light on our rifle and on our shotgun. Needs, the light needs to be upgraded, we were over in Vermeen County a couple of weekends ago. One evening, and we're at a distinct disadvantage with not having a light on our rifle. Mike looked up some different lights, roughly two hundred dollars plus or minus with shipping and everything for the rifle light. And then our shotgun lights, about a hundred and fifty dollars to upgrade it instead of replacing it, we just wanna upgrade it to an LED light. Farms at night can tend to be dark. Lights are good. I need about roughly four hundred dollars to get a couple of lights for them guns. And that's it. Far as I know.
I'll make a motion to approve that.
Second.
You said four hundred?
Yeah, I think that'll cover it, yeah, with ship, because. The one day he looked and I looked a couple of days later and prices have changed and I don't know what shipping's gonna be, but that should cover it.
Okay, we'll just put not to exceed five hundred, just.
That'd be fine.
Properties.
Can I ask?
Yes.
A question? About the police? I have these weird things go through my head. When. I hear people talking about, they go to the. Fuel pump and fuel up and get their mileage driven, we get our gas from JT, right? So what happens if you guys are out? And you run low on gas and JT's not open?
Uh, you mean like two weeks ago when we were coming back from Vermeen County, I stopped and I put it on my debit card and gave Natalie the receipt.
I just want, I mean, I.
That's the only thing we could do because we went to Vermeen County and we drove pretty hard to get over there, and on the way back I noticed we were. Quarter tank or a little less, and it was eight thirty and JT's was already closed, so I just stopped up there at one sixty-three and filled it up and.
That, you know, like I said, weird things pop in my head.
Yeah, and if we're working late at night and we get low, that's all we can do, we can either run to North Terre Haute or we run to Clinton where someplace is open twenty-four seven, or even Rockville and just. We just have to pay for it and. Give Natalie the receipt.
Just wondering.
Yeah, that's all we can do.
And there's not a problem with that Natalie, reimbursing them and that?
I mean, I just.
I know that.
It's on the bills.
As long as we don't.
I have the receipt, yeah.
They're not buying gas from their brother.
It, it doesn't happen very, it doesn't happen very often.
I haven't ever done that before, so.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, that's a. That probably hadn't happened in two or three years that I know of.
That was a circumstance that was.
Right.
Kind of like.
Yeah, we took off. Out of town around, what, seven o'clock-ish maybe? And it was after eight o'clock before we were coming back, so.
That sounded a little hairy over there.
Is that guy still in the hospital?
Far as I know, yeah.
Back to property.
There are wrenches into that, but. JT's been for sale for quite a while, if that sells, what? Would we just have to find another?
I think we would have to just cross that bridge then, so, yeah.
What do you think, if JT sells? They turn it into a steakhouse or something?
Well, before long we'll have a box to pass.
Soil.
Well, that's. I thought it was gonna be a Casey's.
Bucks.
Yeah, originally though, I could swear.
That was a rumor for a little bit, it was gonna be a Casey's and. I don't know what happened. We're pretty good about if we're out working and we get. Close to half a tank and JT's about to close, we'll go fill the car up just to make sure that. In case we get called out in the middle of the night or something.
Okay, now to service that, do you take it to? A dealership around here or?
The one we have now?
Yeah.
No, JT services it.
Okay, so what about the new one?
The new one will be under a three-year warranty, so for the first couple of years, we might take it to Clinton, to the Chevrolet dealership and let them do the oil changes.
So all that computerized stuff on those new things.
Yeah, so we might, we might let them do that. For the first couple of years.
So we'll go ahead and move on to properties, I will say the first thing, it's so nice to have the burnt property down.
Yes, yes.
I know we talked about the other, uh, we've had a fire since then, we have. Two burnt properties now in town, Main Street one and now in the subdivision.
I think Rogers is starting to work on that one.
Are they?
I was by there the other day and there was a Rogers Home Improvement thing and a dumpster sitting out front, so I think they're working on that one.
Which house?
Subdivision?
Doc Hamzal, uh, Liam's house.
Liam's house.
Okay, yeah.
Which.
That's good.
Being in that house, I was in there the day, the next day or whenever it was, that was Monday. I was in there with the fire marshal. And, I mean, I'm not a construction guy, I'm not an engineer or nothing, but I, we, we thought that house could probably be saved.
Okay.
The guy's got a.
We heard it was a loss, I mean.
And, and that's all up to the insurance companies, you never know, so nowadays it's almost, it seems like it's almost as easy for them to knock them down and.
Right.
And build a new one, but. Uh, that's.
And did you get a chance to talk to anybody or look up about the Main Street house?
Okay, I can't track down, so.
Okay.
The house that burnt on Main Street, the Fetter's house, um, it, it's still listed to them and. But they were in foreclosure, there was a, but then it was kinda gone back and forth and.
Still in litigation.
It's, yeah, it's still in some pretty heavy litigation, so I just think we're kinda stuck right now on it, so, yeah.
Well, at least it looks secure, I don't think anybody get in there, hang out or anything. Boarded it up.
Yeah, I think it is.
Well, have you finding anything on your phone there in this valley?
I am responding to the stormwater.
Oh, okay.
Any other property?
Oh, there's several properties in town that could start cleaning up their yards for the spring and, and. We can let them know that we'll be having a cleanup day.
Yeah. I mean, I don't think that one's moving, cuz they've been offered the. Trash receptacle over across the street and it's not been done, so.
I, I know, but he said he's. Next is a legal document. There is a fine, twenty-five dollars. It's in the book, I don't know whether. But.
In the ordinance book?
Uh-huh. How we collect that, I don't know.
For what?
Trash.
Oh.
I don't know.
I don't know.
I don't know either. I mean. Could we say we're just gonna come into your yard and clean it up and then we're gonna put it on your. Probably taps it?
That's what Rockville does.
You can try that.
Yeah.
Which house are you talking about?
Depot Street.
Oh. Yeah, that's ridiculous. I don't know. Yeah.
Well, he's. Okay, I don't, has anybody else got any properties that they're concerned about?
Um, the guy with the trash in the back of the truck did get rid of it, but then he has.
Piling it up again.
It is piling up again.
I do think, I do think we're gonna, I'm gonna go ahead and forward and move on, we're gonna have to write William something up.
I think that's probably prudent at this point.
Because that garage just fell down, there's, it's just. It's bad.
Yeah.
Is that the one right there?
It's on the end of, it's down on, on the end of Matt Street. Two-story house, it's got a garage back there with a bunch of cars in it.
We do have multiple vehicles in town that probably do need to be tagged.
Yeah, I got the two off Main Street, that was, got those.
That, um, the van.
And I'll give her a call and tell her, she told me she was gonna put it in the garage and she rolls, pulled it up there and then let it sit.
Yeah, there's some other. Some other vehicles hiding too around town, so.
Well, you just mentioned garage, I know. Right there, at the entrance of Your Street, I can't think of. It's west and that's Your Street, across from the trailer, their garage is like falling down too.
Oh, right, parties.
Which one?
Well, there's one that's gonna come down, so where the, the burned down house is, was on West Street. The people that blocked that. The next door to it, they're gonna tear down a garage that's kind of in disrepair since they blocked that.
I'm talking.
Okay.
So.
About Tron's house?
Yeah, that looks, they've got a garage.
He's got a, yeah, he's got a pretty crashed into garage too, yeah, I think I know, yeah, that's what you're talking about.
Okay, yeah. It's got a fence around it, but it's all.
Yeah, I'm not sure what he's gonna do with that house.
It looks like it's about to fall down.
Couple of different things and, I don't know, I think he's still moving some things out of it, so.
I can send him a text and ask him.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
I got his number.
I do too.
Okay, back to you Natalie.
Okay, so I'm being audited, I got a notice on Tuesday, last week when I was out of town, that I was called for an audit, it's a five-year audit. That's fine, um. They told me I had three weeks to respond and fill out all these forms and everything, and then. On Wednesday, the auditor called Andrea and said she would be here Friday morning at nine AM. Um, then Andrea was like, uh, okay. So I, so she said, I know they told her she had three weeks, but. I've already started working because every month we upload on, into Gateway, all of my bank statements are uploaded into Gateway, all of our meeting minutes. Um, of our fund reports and things like that, so they have access to all that information all the time. When they started that Gateway, scanning of your bank statements was right, right around the time I started in this office and. Um, we just scan the whole thing, so they can see what we're doing all the time. Um, she did come in Friday, Carol's coming in tomorrow to have an entrance conference with her, with her and me, she'll go through some stuff, she had some paperwork for me to fill out. She does work from seven to five, so she does have a key to the office, she'll be coming in and working by herself. I'm not gonna come in at seven with her. Um, I didn't remember Melissa and Misty doing that when they were here before, when I first started, but I did talk to Melissa and she said they did do that, so. It must have been just me, so I've pulled out all the files that she's requested for the five years. Um. I don't really anticipate, I mean, here it is, it is what it is, it's all there, all the money's there. Maybe they're not gonna like the way I did some things, that's fine, I'm not perfect, I acknowledge that. So.
It's a learning experience.
Yeah, it's a learning experience and that's what we'll do, that's gonna be the takeaway from it, um, it was time. Five years is the max, they can go out, so, you know, it just lies at that point in time, so some of that first year's work. Adrian was responsible for the beginning of the year, and then Amanda was the interim and then I took over, so that year will probably be a little bit murky. You know, and the chain of turn, turning things over, and then everything beyond that's just mine, um.
So this is your first one?
They did one when I first started on the past years, so I learned quite a bit then, but yeah, this will be my first one. She did tell me that. She did say that, she asked which council member helped me with my annual financial report and I said, no one did. And she said, oh, someone's supposed to help you, and I said, I didn't know that. And she said, well, that was actually part of your last audit, and I said, well, there were two exit conferences for the last audit. There was one that was done with me and the auditors and John was here, and then there was a second exit conference done with Adrian. That I was not, I did not get to attend, so I don't know where that was set at, if that was set in that one or if that was, cuz I don't remember it being set in mine, so. So I already got that negative on me, but it is what it is, like I said, so. Anyway, um, that's about it, I filled out some stuff for her already, and she's already pulled some, you know, some things and. So she'll pull samples, she'll be in here tomorrow morning at seven, she works like, they're required right now to be two days a week on site. And then the rest of it's remote, like she was remote today. So, she's nice.
They don't offer any kind of handbook or anything for that.
No, I mean, we have, we do have some stuff from the state and I have a couple of binders that I have, they're, have instructions, other clerk treasures I've put together over the years. And whatnot, so.
They, they don't have it.
No, and she said, you know, when I talked to her yesterday, we were just chatting and, um. I was like, are people nice to you, and she's like, no. She said, no, they yell at me, they cuss us out, they threaten us, it's like, really bad, I'm like, well, that's not happening here, so, you know, we're just not like that. But, um, yeah, she just, she said, all we're here to do is make recommendations, that's it, you know, so. That's all there is to that, so. Um, this is your January fund report, February's not fully reconciled cuz I'm always behind the first of the year. And, um, I think that's all I got.
Do we wanna have our same mauling company this year?
No, we already did that, mauling contract with Crowder.
Oh, it was a two-year.
We did a new one, we did a new one a few months ago, yeah, we did it in the fall. So. Yeah. That's about it.
Okay.
Public comments.
Yep.
Okay.
No comments, no.
We're not public, we're a police.
Yeah, and Chris, I did get your email or your message and I'll do that this week, I just kinda came back to a whirlwind and stuff.
That was supposed to give you three weeks to prepare it for it, that you had a day.
Right, that I had a day and that. Uh, I really thought we were, I thought I was going to have a nervous breakdown cuz I could not find two thousand twenty-one files. I thought, I was about to cry and I don't cry, by the way.
I see her car over here on Sat- Sunday and I was like. What in the world is Natalie doing over there after her vacation?
Yeah.
And then she goes, oh, they surprised the audit, I'll be up trying to figure.
I was just sorting some stuff out and organizing it cuz some of it was just thrown in there.
You're like, I finally found this box, I was freaking out.
I thought, I mean, I text Jase, I was like, Jase, I took that little filing cabinet out of my office and you took it for scrap, where my files in it? He's like, no, it was empty Natalie, I'm like, okay, so.
Do like the big cities get audited every year then, or?
Um. She said that, like, I'm not, I'm not, don't have to have a federal audit, it's only if you spend more than seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars you have to have that. She said some, some are audited more frequently than others based upon their, fine, I think probably the money that flows through them a little bit more. But, I don't know. I feel like five years is a long time.
Maybe one or.
Because I don't know why I did something in two thousand eighteen anymore.
Yeah.
So, you know, we'll just have to see what happens.
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
Oh.
You need to do that.
We have the fire department contract.
Oh.
You don't, you have two copies of it, Becky, we never did the fire department contract.
Okay.
So, it's right there, give them their copy.
So, should I just sign it and you guys sign it and give it to them?
I would say so, I mean, I guess you can make a motion to approve the fire department contract for two thousand twenty-three.
I do.
Apparently, apparently, apparently not having a contract hits Thomas.
Right, right. Well, I thought I gave it to Becky one day and we talked about it and then she didn't have it and I don't know what happened to it.
I think I remember that cuz I asked, I remember asking Birch one, one day.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, I do remember that.
Yeah, and then today, I, it hit me and I printed out a new one, so.
Okay, I make a motion, we approve the fire department contract.
Okay. Becky's first, Barb's, Carol's second, okay, alright.
All in favor?
And then we sign it and give it to Kevin and they can sign it.
I will make a motion to approve the bills.
I left that off the bottom of my.
Yeah, I know, that's what I was just like.
Dang. Cody's approving bills.
You, you got all but that.
I know, I can fix that, though.
And then, have they come back down?
You gave them. So who's your bill second?
Barb said she.
Oh, Barb, okay. Right. All in favor of that?
All in favor on the bills, actually also on the contract.
What about the public, the Duke Energy thing, did you get them straightened out?
I paid them.
Okay.
Um, I've not received a new bill yet.
Okay.
Um, I'm currently in dispute with AT&T, I filed a dispute.
Good.
Because, um, the renegotiated bill came back at twelve hundred dollars.
Right.
Um, so I'm in a dispute on our line in here and on the fire, on the police station line, I'm not paying an AT&T bill to them until they give me the right amount.
Okay.
Because to tell me it was going to be that, I paid them that, they credited it out, they cleared it all out, and then to bill me twelve hundred dollars for one month's worth of service.
Right.
For two landlines, no. So I filed a dispute and I have some lady working on my dispute.
Cody, satellite phones.
That.
No.
I mean, you would be better off doing like an AT&T like desk phone, but yeah, like twelve hundred dollars, no reason a desk phone should ever cost you that, like, like that's insane. The only desk phone we offer is like twenty dollars a month. And that's unlimited like calling, like that's international, like there's.
Right.
So, if it's more than that, there's something crazy wrong with that.
I think they're just expecting government offices just to automatically pay these bills and not look at stuff.
Yeah, that's, that's nuts. I'm also not happy with AT&T, like, the fact that, you know, my internet is as expensive as it is and.
And it's terrible lately, it's really bad.
So bad, I think I text you, it's like, is next door's like internet just trash, I couldn't I was, I can't remember what I was trying to do that day, I went into Tarot to the coffee shop, cause I was like, I can't, I can't even work on this.
Okay, adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.